Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, so we're live on Facebook. So, welcome everyone. This is our regular November 9th meeting. Twenty twenty of the zoning board of appeals of the town of Poppy. We have one application on tonight. David and Samantha Warren. Public hearing on a front yard area variance for property located at twenty eight fifty four Gardner Road. And. Welcome, I see code officers trying to get on. So we're, we're all here. And for the benefit of our applicant, I'm David Tessier, the chairman. Our members are Dave Hale, Kevin Sharp, Don Nuga Bauer. And Patrick Frazee was. He's on, but.
I'm the invisible man.
That's alright. Our town attorney for the planning board is Jamie Sutford, code officer Bob Rodriguez. Our board secretary Donna Allnut. Veronica Oldtailing, she's our facilitator, so she's. Running the computer, so. She needs to mute somebody, you're gonna get muted, but. Unless you're rustling a lot of papers or something, we can keep everybody. Open so they can speak and. So, I will. Start with reading the application. And. I told David, this is one of the best applications I've seen. Not only did he type it in, but the sentences make sense and it's. Very informative, so. It's application from David Warren, twenty eight fifty four Gardner Road, Fabius, New York. And. The farm zone is the zoning classification. Not in a flood zone, not within a hundred feet of. Oh, it says. Says there's a wetland on the property, but not located within a hundred feet of the proposed accessory structure. If you did get to look at the property, it's pretty high and dry, but it drops off quickly in the back and he's got several acres, so that's probably where the wetland is. So, describe the subject of appeal or variance requested. In a farm district with a single family land use, the minimum front yard setback for an accessory structure is fifty feet from the right of way line. The variance requested is to allow construction of the subject accessory structure. With a front yard setback of twenty feet from the right of way line. So he's looking for a variance of from fifty feet down to twenty feet. Describe this, how strict application of law would produce undue hardship? Due to the narrow and long shape of the lot and the significant grades present behind the, behind the principal structure, the house. It is necessary for the proposed accessory structure barn to be located between the house and the road in the side yard. The side yard in front of the house is very narrow due to driveway location and steep grades to the south. For the barn to be located in the side yard while complying with the required setback would be too close to both the house and the driveway. This location is undesirable for the homeowner because locating the barn so close to the driveway creates difficult access. This location close to the house and driveway is also visually unappealing, which is undesirable to the homeowner and presumably to the neighboring property owners. The barn location that is being proposed as a part of the, this application for variance is still at least forty five feet from the edge of the road pavement and well screened from the road with evergreen trees. Describe how the hardship has created as unique. The hardship created is specifically due to the shape of the lot, location of the house. Location of the driveway and grades to the south and east. There may be other properties in an immediate vicinity that do, do share a similar hardship. And describe how variance would observe the. Zoning law would not change the character of the district. The proposed structure is a tastefully constructed pole barn, the structure will be well screened and will still be sufficiently set back from the road. The proposed location of the pole barn will maintain reasonable separation from the principal structure on the property which aligns with property layouts in the area. The proposed location will also not impede the view of the principal structure from the road. Also similar to other barns constructed in the area. And the application signed by David Warren. We do have a short environmental assessment form attached, signed by David Warren's. Location map. And an aerial photo with some dimensions on it that wasn't very clear. I'd asked him for another map with better dimensions. I have a copy of that. I'm hoping that. Veronica has one at some point that we can put on the screen.
If not, if not, I have one I can, I can share.
Okay, good. Let's see, is the application fee been paid? Yes. Donna says yes. Was it properly advertised and were neighbor notices sent? Okay. County planning review was not required for this because it's not on a state highway and it is residential accessory garage. So, we did not, did not have to refer to Dogger County. Let's see, is there any?
Also, yeah, it wasn't referred because it's a set, it's a front yard setback. And the county has acted out of those with, with our town.
Yes. Okay. Is there any, any additional information that I have, that anybody knows of in addition to this application and the drawings? Anything coming to, has that thing been sent to the town board? In addition? Okay.
Hey Dave.
Yes.
Does a letter from one of the neighbors count as information or?
Yeah. So we have one?
Yep. This is from Barb and Sam. Oh boy. Frazino. Twenty eight twenty one Gardner Road. We are in favor of granting a variance to Dave and Samantha Warren. They are nice people and keep their property well maintained and are looking great. Yeah, keep their property well maintained and looking great. Any additions should only add value to the property and ours.
Okay, thank you. Will you submit, get that to the board secretary at some point to put in the file?
Yes, sir will.
Okay. That's good. Twenty eight twenty one, I assume that's across the road. Anything else that's been received? A secret review, should we do that now? Just to say it. We talked about it, he did submit an app, a short environmental assessment form as I said. But this is a residential area variance, which I believe is a type two. And no further environmental review is required. So at this point, we would need a motion that's to. That the ZBA is the lead agency and that this is a residential area variance, which is a type two action and no further environmental review is required. If someone would like to so move that.
I will make that motion, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Dave Hale, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Give me a second.
Kevin was first, I think. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded for. Our environmental review. Further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, motion was carried unanimously. So now I guess we open the public hearing if we're all ready, unless there's something else. And again, should we have a motion to open the public hearing? Is that appropriate, Jamie? Or just, okay. Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Dave Hale, seconds? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the hearing is open. So, let's. Like to hear from the applicant if he's got anything further to add?
No, nothing, nothing specific beyond what I have there in the application. I just, I guess I just wanted to highlight, we've been, we've been here for about eleven years. Been kind of thinking about building a barn for a few years of that at least, struggling with where to put it. Considering how I could possibly get it out behind the house, which would be the preferred location if I could get access to it, which I really can't. And looked at some options out front and really come down to this, this feeling like this is the only location on the property that we can reasonably put the structure. So, you know, I appreciate all your time and your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And I did see you put stakes out in the ground and then I was there. Sunday, right? And some of the board members have looked at it as well and it's really good to have the stakes in so we can look and see exactly what you've got in mind. One of your drawings showed two different sizes to a proposed building. So which one of the stakes?
The stakes represent the twenty four by forty eight.
Okay. So of the two options, that was narrower and longer than the other one?
Correct.
Okay. So, does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I do, Dave.
Okay.
I was reading a little note, you gotta raise your hand so you're unmuted, is that what you're doing Veronica?
Yeah, we have one person from the public who would like to be heard, so when you're ready, if you want to keep going with your discussion, that's fine, but.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
So the, so the building's gonna be elongated towards the house? Or towards the driveway? I'm just, I saw the stakes, but I wasn't quite sure, so you're twenty?
The, the stakes are the, are the corners, just twenty four feet, twenty four feet wide. If you're looking from the house and then forty eight feet kind of away from the house, parallel to the driveway, the forty eight foot dimension is closer to parallel with the driveway.
Okay, and you're gonna come off the driveway with the, with your access to the barn, okay, so you won't be making a new driveway for it?
There's a, there's a, the driveway's gonna have to extend towards the, the structure, I don't know, fifteen feet or so. Structure is not right up to the edge of the existing driveway, it's set back a little bit because that way you can turn into the, turn into the structure.
Right, but you're not having access off of Gardner Road for the barn?
No, 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 no.
Yep, okay.
I think one advantage to this narrow building is only at twenty four feet wide is it has a shorter peak. The peak, the gable end will be facing Gardner Road, so it gets a little less of a impact on the view from Gardner Road.
Plus the trees are gonna hide it well too.
Yes.
Really, yeah.
Any other questions? No?
Nope.
Alright. Jamie, you have anything else to add? No? Alright. Well, we have somebody from the public that would like to comment, we need their name and, and address and we'd like to hear from them.
Okay. This one is from Zoom, so just give your first and last name and address, please. Go ahead.
Hello?
Are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is Wendy Gathman that lives next door. From the gentleman that wants this ovarian. So, this building, did he have it surveyed?
I mean, I have an existing survey, yes.
Because we own some of that property over there. So, I mean.
Which side are you on? Are you to the south or to the north?
Veronica, can you pull up, put up what we have?
Yep. Thank you. We're at twenty eight thirty two Gardner Road.
So that would be south of this property.
Can you guys see that? Blow it up a little, why don't you blow it up a little bit and it's, it is difficult to see, but you can see it.
You want me to share my screen, David?
Is it better?
Do you have the, the better drawing that does?
I have, but yeah, the original, not scanned.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble here.
Because we own two lots over there.
Hi Wendy, it's Dave. Yeah, no, I, I understand where your lots are. This, this isn't on, I know you've got the lot that your house is on and the lot between us. This is quite a ways from the property line between my lot and your second lot.
Well, I don't know, we're concerned about this building because it's gonna be facing our property. How big is this building gonna be?
The proposed is twenty four by forty eight feet.
What's twenty four by forty eight feet?
So, we're looking at a drawing right now that shows.
It's a lot better.
There. Right there, you can see the, the house, the driveway, Gardner Road.
There's the guy talking there.
The, there's two structures shown, one is thirty by forty, he settled on the one that says twenty four by forty eight. So it ends up being about twenty feet from that road. Right of way line. And then it's thirty four feet from that south property line. And you can still see the trees. The grass is kind of green and then the trees at the back of that proposed drive, building. That drops way straight, straight down into the wooded area. So the grass is the flat area.
And there's no, and there's no other place to put this building?
In, in my opinion, no, there's not, Wendy.
Well, I'm not too crazy about it.
Okay, and you own a lot?
You're concerned, just the ability to see it? I mean, there's quite a bit of woods between us.
Yeah, because if it's gonna be facing, well, it's gonna be facing your house and mine. I just don't want my property to be appreciated.
It won't be.
Dave, am I reading this thirty four foot from her sideline, line?
Yes. Yeah.
Never be able to sell that building lot.
So how, can I ask the app, Wendy Gathman, how, how big is the lot?
How big is your lot over there? Five acres.
And that's. In addition to your lot, you have two of those five acre lots?
True, yes.
Okay, alright.
So Dave, he has thirty four foot from the sideline? What's, what's poppy's required? Is it five foot? So what's the deal there?
Well, that said, there's, it requires five feet in the sideline for accessory structure, so it does meet that.
Dave, do you want to, Dave Warren, do you want to explain what's, why you have to have it there because of the?
Yeah, I mean, really to put it behind the house, there's not a suitable spot behind the house that's accessible because of the grades falling off to the east. Putting it closer to the house to avoid the front setback is gonna push it because of the, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's, it's pretty steep and falls away to the south of the house, so to, to keep it out of that, the steep grades to the south, it would be right up tight to the driveway and it would be up close to the house. It would be, it would, it would be much more visible from the road. It would not really be accessible from the existing driveway because it would be so close to the driveway.
So you don't, you don't want to put it up toward the garage, you want to put it toward the road more?
Yeah, just so that it's better screened from the road. And it's a little more accessible from the driveway because it widens out there a little.
Okay, so can everybody's see that on this drawing? It's, it's a better drawing than the one that came with the application.
So your access to that garage would be, the door opening would be towards the house?
The doors would be on this face.
Oh, there you are, okay, yeah, I see your cursor, gotcha, yep. Okay.
I would like to, listening to the neighbor, this is not by way of a recommendation, but merely advice. A reminder that if this board is inclined to grant this variance, that you can look at any myriad of conditions, including screening. I, I heard the applicant say that it was screened, you could make it a requirement that at all times it fully screened and mature trees not chopped down. You can also influence architecture and you can also influence size. Among, among other things, just to keep in mind. If that could, would mitigate any circumstance, if you do find that it's either advisable or acceptable.
I mean, I did see, it was kind of woodsy right there on the south side, correct?
Yes, it is.
It is. I can. This is. Can you see the Google Earth image now?
There it is.
Yep.
So this is my, my house, the proposed barn is right here. This is Wendy's house and then, and as Wendy, Wendy pointed out, she has, there's an additional lot in between our houses. Sends it off to the east in these woods here. This is, there's a creek running through here, it's pretty steep. South of my house, down into this, it probably falls. If you look at the cursor, that's about thirteen eighty eight feet. Down by the creek, it's thirteen, it's about twenty feet down, down to this point.
Okay.
Twenty foot, twenty, twenty, over twenty foot drop, there's thirteen sixty, that's almost thirty feet to there.
There's substantial woods there for, I mean.
Yes.
Without planting anything.
Well, the, the woods would need to be on his property, right? We can't, we can't make the neighbor keep their woods.
No.
If there were.
Okay, I miss, misspoke.
If I want to build a house there, you could, you could never build a house there then.
Why not?
Because it's gonna be too close to his barn or garage that he's putting up.
No, he's got the side yard, he's only gotta be five feet away from your side yard property. That's the town's requirement. He could be, he could be a lot closer to, to the side to, to your property if he wanted to be. So you, David, you own some of those trees?
It's right now, as it's shown, I'm thirty five feet from the side. So going back to here. These trees in here are, are my property, this is the property line.
So you do have trees?
Yes.
Could you keep that up for a second and?
Google Earth.
No, no, don't go back to Google Earth yet. What, the map that we're looking at, could we just clarify the variance that's needed?
So this, this is the front setback, this is the fifty feet, fifty feet from the right of way.
Right.
And as you can see, the barn extends towards the road beyond that front setback.
So we're looking at approximately a twenty five foot variance?
That's correct.
Thirty.
He's a. The variance is written as thirty, a- as it's drawn currently, it's twenty five as shown.
Okay, twenty five on the map with thirty is the request?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no variance needed for the side yard?
That's right.
No.
Okay, so. David Warren, can you describe the, the building? What's it gonna, the shape of the building?
It's, it's planned to be pole barn, pole barn construction. And then they either metal siding, metal roof and either metal or vinyl siding. Overhead, insulated overhead doors, garage doors effectively, not barn sliding doors. It'll have a, a man door for, for personal access and a few windows. And.
What, what kind of a roof structure?
It'll have a, it'll have a truss structure.
With a peak down the center?
Peak down the center, running, you know, the, the long, the long length.
East west, okay.
What's your height on the, on the roof?
It would probably, if I do attic trusses, it would probably be in the seventeen, eighteen foot to the peak.
Is fifteen the variance or fifteen the code?
I'm, I don't know the code off the top of my head.
Bob, can you help us with that? What's the height? Maximum for garage?
It depends on how far off the road it is. How far off this? Sideline, right? Very foot, you go up, you gotta be two foot away from.
Bob, can you hear me? It's Dave Hale.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear.
Okay, I have, to set the person next door at ease, what is required to build a house? How far you have to be off the sideline? I know it's different than a secondary structure.
Okay, you have to forgive me, let me, let me go down, hold on one minute. I'm sorry, I don't have my book, I don't have my book with me and I don't know all the.
I, I wanna say it's twenty, I mean, don't hold me, I thought it was twenty, but Dave might be able to help me out on that.
We had that page.
I'll try to find it.
You did, yeah, you did have the page up.
Yeah.
Dave, I've got a question, it's bad. What, what is the width of Gardner Road? As it's, as it stands now and then plus the fifty feet? Where does the fifty feet measure from the center or the shoulder?
From the, the right of way line. So if the right of way is this is a new road, it's probably a sixty foot road.
Third, third, right of way is thirty four feet. Thirty five feet.
From center.
Side, sideline setback is twenty feet, rear is five feet. Actual height would be fifteen feet.
And you, and you're allowed to go a foot, for every foot high, you have to be two foot more in, correct? And now.
Correct.
So he's still within.
So if he has to be twenty feet and he's a thirty four, that's fourteen more, he could be seven feet higher. Than the fifteen.
Well, getting into a sideline variance.
Right.
So as far as being able to build next door, a person needs just twenty foot from that sideline. From what I understood.
Yes.
Wendy, if, I mean, if it'll help, the, the trees to the south on my property are gonna remain there. I'm not gonna have lights on the barn shining to the south towards your adjacent property. You know, and the, you know, the barn is gonna be maintained, you know, it's not gonna be a dump. So if that helps.
We could put a condition on that the.
The windows in the back.
The wooded area remain between the garage and the property line. The wooded area remain between the garage and the property line.
If, if you don't mind, one of the, I walked this with Dave when he first started planning this, he called me over. We talked about this, we looked at the different options, and I was one that told him, you know, depending on what he wanted to do here, he would need a variance for this or not. The thirty, the thirty-five foot setback that he has off the sideline. That, he, he's moving that barn as far south as he can before it starts really dropping off.
Right, I see that.
And as he gets closer to the house, it gets worse.
Yes.
And that's why he's trying to go up there, this map really doesn't show the drop off on that.
You're cutting out.
Sorry.
When I walked around it with him on the wooded side.
And you're cutting out.
He's trying to keep. Four or five feet away from the actual drop off, so he, so he has a, some flat land behind it to, to maintain the backside.
You got any questions for the people?
I don't know, do we have any more questions, does everybody understand the project and the proposal?
Well, I guess I have no say, so.
Well, we've, we've listened to the. To everyone and. We understand the neighbor's concerns.
If the, if it would set the neighbor's mind at ease, we could forbid windows on that south side, so they wouldn't have to see any light coming protruding from it.
I don't, I don't know how you could see it through the tree.
I'm just.
Yeah. It's. I suppose we could do that.
I don't really want to, but.
No.
I, I don't think that's necessary, because he's, i- if he was within the side setback, maybe then, but because he's not in the side setback.
I agree. He's not, he's not crouching on the, crouching on the side.
No, infringement on the, on the neighbor to the.
To the south.
To, to the south. I see the reason. Putting restrictions on that building.
Could I clarify that the, the homo, or the neighbor has a lot in between the neighbor's house and this project that is about a five acre lot?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the only infringement is on the highway.
Yeah. Yes, I agree with that.
I agree, and it also shows that there's trees in between the new structure and the road. If I understand correctly.
Yes, we, we saw the lot.
Those are evergreen trees.
Oh, and they're evergreens as well, okay.
Yeah, oh, it's, it's very well hidden, it's, if that structure would be hid from the road, pretty good.
I don't think it could be any more hidden if we asked for it.
One thing we haven't mentioned.
You guys are.
The. The one extra line in there is the overhead utility line, and that's a power pole right in front of the, between the proposed building and the road. And the dash line is overhead power line. And of course, you can't build a building underneath that power line, so he has to stay back from that, which he has.
Does the town. Highway Department have any concern? Or have they not been asked?
I don't think they've been asked, the driveway on the Gardner is not gonna change.
Tom, Tom Purcell does know about this, I have talked to him about it, he didn't voice any. Concerns about it.
No, what, road widening project coming up or anything, no?
No.
Okay.
We don't have any restriction on how far away a building is from an overhead line?
Not us, that's something to do with.
National grid.
National grid.
Yeah, is there other structures down through there, Dave? I didn't, I didn't drive down Gardner, I turned around, came back out to twenty. Is there other structures down through there, there? Close to the road, such as like what you wanna build? Yeah, my. You know, not, not to say what anybody else is doing, it's not really my business, but.
Right.
Directly across the street. Google Earth again. Is that showing up?
Yep.
Yeah.
This, this is across the street, there's a, there's a barn structure there that's, you know. Closer than fifty foot to the right of way line. And. You know, I don't, I don't, this house looks like it's setback, and I don't know if there's any other variances here, I don't see anything else. There's down here at the corner, this is in front of Wendy's house. Wendy's barns are, are setback here, obviously, but these two structures are practically on the shoulder of the road.
That's Sam's house, isn't it, across the street?
Yeah, the, the house is across the street and the garages are on, on your side, yeah.
Yeah, those don't belong to us, those belong to Sam.
Oh, no, 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 Wendy, no, I said yours, yours are setback, but your, your neighbor across the street has these two that are, that are not. No, yours are. What's that?
I said theirs is pretty close to the road.
Yeah, they're right up on the road, pretty much.
Those back before ordinance, I imagine.
We have a barn on the farm just like that. Yep. I appreciate Wendy's concern, I mean, they're good neighbors, I, I don't wanna do something that they don't wanna do. I wish I had another option to, to put something here.
I, I understand that, but the problem is, I, I mean, even if you wanted to build a house or sell that, that lot. I don't, I don't even think you could, I don't even think you could.
I, I don't understand why not.
You had that question, why, why couldn't you sell it?
It's five acre lot. You're saying you can't sell it if he puts a barn up?
That's not what we're saying, you don't want, never mind, do whatever you want.
No, I just, I'm asking a question. Yeah, you struck, stroke a nerve or something, I'm sorry.
I, I understood your question, I thought it was reasonable.
Yeah.
He's with, he's, he's well back from the sideline, and you, you, you can go as close as twenty foot to it to build ours. And there's five acres there, there's more enough road frontage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
Where is the other neighbor that was in favor, David?
Twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Which one is that?
I don't, I'm not sure which, which house that is.
Was there a name on that letter?
It's Presina, it's Presi, it's Presinas, it's on the corner right across from those barns that are really close to the road, right by up on Route twenty.
Oh, right here, okay. Oh, Sam, they're, they're on the corner, okay, that's, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize his name. Yeah.
I didn't know how close, what the proximity was.
Yeah. Well, if we've, think we've heard everything or had all our questions answered. Are we ready to close the hearing?
David, I did, Tom Purcell was just in my office. And I talked to him, he was overhearing what we had said, and he said that all he's asking for is a five foot variance, and he's still way off the road, so he has no issues or concerns with this. Highway.
Good.
I just wanted to let you know.
Good, thank you. Good to know. So that's. Good comment from our highway superintendent. Anything else to add to this? Mr. Applicant, you have anything else to add?
No, nothing else.
Okay. Cuz we'll, we'll close the, the hearing, but that doesn't mean we close the meeting, it's still open. And when we vote to close, then we'll, we will deliberate, and welcome to. Stay on and listen, of course, we may have some further detailed questions for the applicant. But nobody will be allowed to speak or add comments after we close the hearing. So. But I think that's the next step, if we're ready. Somebody wants to make a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Again.
Okay, Dan. Motion. Second.
Kevin, second, okay.
Yes, yeah. Any discussion about that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Okay, so the hearing is closed. If there's nothing else of, of, of questions, I think we've heard everything, we've got a pretty good handle on the proposal. And. If someone wants to make a motion for or against, now is the time to do that. And, and you might consider any conditions, we did talk about a condition of. Retaining, however we word it, retaining the forested area between the barn and the. Prop, south property line.
If we should go through the criterion.
Always.
I just, just pulled mine out.
Yes. Sorry about that. Oh, I gotta find a. Okay. So. For the applicant's benefit, these are the five questions we go through for every application for area variance. And. We have to consider these five, and in the end, we. Consider the benefit. To the applicant versus a detriment to the community. So, first question.
Also, we can, we can lose the shared screen, please, Mr. Warren.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we can see each other, okay, thank you. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. We discussed several. Different. Locations here. Any comments on that?
He, he could achieve it by shortening the building and getting away from the variance a little more, but.
Yeah.
That would take away from what he's after.
Right. I know, I know we talked about putting it behind the house, but that really drops down.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we're talking a lot of work to get it back.
Almost unaccessible down there.
Yep.
I, I, I think he's come up with the best. Best possible location, considering the property. Any other comments on that one? Okay, does this? Application result in desirable.
Is Pat trying to say something?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Trying to get my camera working.
I don't think it's undesirable from what I've seen around in that area, I mean, obviously, you swing the corner, there's a barn, garage staring you right in the face by the road, so. This building is not gonna. If anything, it's gonna be farther back and hardly noticeable, so I. And he's described what it's gonna look like, so I don't see it's gonna be any undesirable.
Okay, I don't either, I think it's gonna fit in. Any other comments on that one? Okay, is the request substantial?
Yes.
So, from thirty feet down to twenty, toward the road, I think you could say it's substantial. Any other comments on that one?
It's fifty down to twenty, right?
Fifty to twenty, sorry.
Right.
The request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. I don't see any impact on drainage or view shed or anything like that, other than.
Water shedding, I mean, he's got plenty, plenty property for the water to shed onto, so I don't see that being a problem.
No. Okay. And the last question, whether alleged difficulty is self-created, and I guess you could say it is. You know, he doesn't have to build a garage. He's choosing to do that within the construct, time, context of the current zoning. So. So given those questions. If, if we make a motion, we have to consider the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the community regarding those five. Issues. So is, is anybody ready to make a motion?
Did you want to put any conditions?
Oh, good point. It's best, better to do that first if you want.
I, I see no need for conditions, given the fact that the side setback is well within the code and the only. Like we said, infringement is on the highway and. And there, that's happening all the time, anyhow, I hate to see the guy be restricted with his woods. Just because.
Okay. Well, that's a good point, and then every time you put a restriction on the condition, something else for the code officer to keep track of down the road, so. We do have to be careful about making them too, too. Restrictive.
And the benefit, Tom Purcell's already gave it an okay, so.
Yeah.
As far as this highway. He has no concerns with it.
I, I would also say that if there was a side setback need, you know, and a, a variance for that, I'd be more inclined to give that some thought. But without the side variance needed, I would agree with Pat that I think, I can't see a restriction that really makes sense to me.
No, I agree.
Okay.
He's within his means on the side, so.
Yeah.
So given that, how about a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve this variant, so the twenty-five foot. That's what we're doing down to twenty-five feet, right?
Well, the, the application said twenty, so we can go that, to that far, but the drawing said twenty-five.
It wasn't twenty-five needed.
Twenty-five is what the building is, but I think we're looking for a thirty-foot variance.
Fifty down to twenty, fifty to twenty.
Fifty down to twenty.
Real quick, we talking foundation, cuz the gable, you're gonna have. Overhangs on the gable? Does that count?
And that, that's an advantage of going to twenty, if he only needs twenty-five, well, it gives him a couple feet to have an overhang. And not have to worry about it, cuz you are supposed to measure the overhang.
Yeah, I mean, overhangs are nice, I like.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I intend to have an overhang, something, something small, twelve, eighteen inches or something.
Right. So you're for twenty, so that the variance down to twenty feet.
That's, that's what the application, yeah, that's what I had in the application.
Yeah, so that's what I wanna state in my.
Okay, so.
Yeah, let's clarify that, so he needs a variance of.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet, so that he is at least.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet off of the. Road.
Yes.
Right of way, right, yeah.
Okay, is that clear to everybody?
Yes.
All right, do we have a second to the motion?
I would second that.
Kevin, seconds that? That sounds good to me, any further discussion? If not. I'm gonna ask the secretary to call the roll on this for a vote.
Okay, Dave Tassier.
Yes.
Patrick Frazee.
Yes.
David Hale.
Yes.
Donald Newgobauer.
Yes.
Kevin Sharp.
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, very good. That's it, unless there's anything else, is there any other business coming up that we know of? Bob, you know of anything coming up? No, okay.
Happy holidays. Happy holidays.
Yeah.
Hey, Bob, congratulations, I won't say anymore, but congratulations. Good job.
Okay, so we did.
In tourists coming, not too much business probably, and building.
No, not too much.
No, we're still getting a lot of permits in.
All right.
Lot of building coming in.
That's, that's something I saw years ago, when winter came, buildings stopped, I mean, contractors, they all went hotting, stonewalling. But now. Framing through the winter.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Is it got anything to do with this? Oh, yeah, I know about that, no, uh, there's two more houses that are, people are applying for, we know.
Okay, no variances?
No.
All right, good. Well, thank you all and uh. Um, good luck with your project, David, uh.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll talk to you at the next uh, next meeting, whatever that is.
Be interested, drive by and get some ideas.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Dave.
Are we having a motion to uh, close the hearing, close the meeting?
Make a motion, close the meeting.
Dave Hale makes the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Dan, second it. Uh, any further discussion, otherwise. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, any opposed, oh, meeting is closed, thank you very much.
Goodbye all. Hi, Nikki.
Hi, everybody.
Just give me a call when you're.